January 7th meeting. The first item on the agenda is a continuation for Lakeview Estates for comprehensive permit. I'm going to recuse myself again and hand it over to Peter Gabriel.
Thanks, Brian. Jim, what do we have tonight?
Yep, so tonight, Lakeview Estates is back. There has been, I will say, some substantial progress since the last time we met, which is, which I think is fantastic to hear. Since the last time, you know, obviously, there's been some ongoing drainage concerns down at the end of Candlelight Lane. And since our last meeting to now, they have procured Mr. Sean Malone, who I believe is on the line. Yep, there he is. He's on the line. And I believe he can certainly provide you with some updates. But in general terms, what has been discussed between the developer and the town is some enhanced designs for drainage in the general area that we've been talking about all this time. They have supplied a design. And in my early review, I believe it to be a very, a great improvement to the area. I will say, though, we do have our peer review engineer vetting it to confirm, because obviously, I'm not a drainage expert. So hopefully, he'll have it here soon for us to provide you with some guidance. But I believe, you know, other than Mr. Malone's introduction and maybe some early questions and comments, I believe the request tonight is to continue to just next Thursday, if the board is willing to. That is on track with what I've discussed with the developer. And the reason for that is, again, they've provided us with the design. And the hopes is that our peer review engineer can return it back to us fairly quickly. He's provided me with that understanding that he would provide us fairly soon here with his review. And then, you know, at that next meeting, which if the board is available next Thursday evening, I believe the applicant would provide us with a very detailed schedule as to when the drainage improvements would be completed. And I think, you know, I've expressed to the applicant or developer that with that schedule, would need to be rather firm. You know, the board, I think, would be inclined to potentially recommend releasing of the cease and desists at the next meeting if there was a proper design and a rigid schedule that both parties would adhere to. So with that being said, if Sean could provide us just with a brief introduction, I think that would be, you know, good for the board. And then, you know, I and Sean can certainly answer any questions.
Go ahead, Sean.
Yes, I just want to make sure everybody can hear me all right. I was having trouble with my computer Zoom, so I had to call in. So just want to make sure everybody hears me.
Yeah, you're good.
All right, great. My name is Sean Malone. I have not been before this board, so nice to meet you all. I'm a civil engineer with Oak Consulting Group. I have been retained by Fafford to kind of take over where we're at in the Lakeview Estates. As some of the board members may or may not know, I have been involved with Fafford for a number of years, most recently with the town of Bellingham with the Bellingham Shores Project. So I did have some background in coming into this. I have gone through the work done by GNH, as well as the review letter by the Conservation Commission's peer review consultant, BSC Group. I've done some analysis on my own. And as Jim had mentioned, I have prepared a design for some additional improvements for that area based on my analysis. I submitted that to the Conservation Commission and to BSC last week. We're scheduled to meet with the Conservation Commission, I believe, next Wednesday. So we're hoping to get a little bit of feedback there. There's a lot to digest, I think, with BSC Group. But I think we are proposing some good improvements to the area that would certainly help the situation that's been ongoing there. As Jim mentioned, we are preparing a construction schedule for the work proposed. We're proposing that this work not occur until the springtime. And the reason being is for enable stabilization and not create a bigger problem by disrupting things in a winter condition. So with that, we'd be providing this board, as well as the Conservation Commission, a schedule of the work activity, generally, starting probably April 15th and proceeding, it'd be about a month, month and a half, we're figuring right now. But again, I'll give you the more detailed schedule. And my hope is, as Jim mentioned, that this board would be willing to meet with us next Thursday once hopefully get some comments back from BSC Group. I can get you that schedule. And we can have a more in-depth discussion about what we're proposing and hopefully bring this process to an end soon.
All right, thank you, Sean. One of the questions that I definitely have is not so much fixing or band-aiding that the proposal in front of us will be a cure. That'll be one and done, and we don't deal with this again. And that's...
Absolutely. And I had a phone conversation with Howard Fafford just the other day, and that's his desire as well. He's willing to do the work and get it done. So this is not a problem for the town, or for him, or for anybody else in the future. So I think we're all in the same mindset with that comment. And I think we're going to get there.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any comments or questions?
Peter, if I could ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, Sean. In your review of the situation, can you just walk us through generally what you see as the sort of the culprit and the situation that needs to be addressed in terms of this drainage?
Yeah, so it's a little bit multifold, if you would. I think that there's been a historic issue there. It seems pretty clear. There's a large watershed from the roadway and some of the other properties, not including Lakeview, that's coming down to one point in that area, approximate to that basin C within the roadway. Through the work that GNH did with the town, they installed a drainage structure. My findings were that the outlet to that structure was undersized, and it was also connected to the basin with Lakeview Estates. And the outlet to those combined was undersized. So what was happening is you were getting a rush of stormwater, and then the pipes going out to the lake weren't big enough to handle it. So we're surcharging, cooling up in the street, and then overflowing and affecting some of the neighbors. Additionally, found some things that we can do to improve the basin itself. And the four bay has been retaining water. So we're proposing some modifications to that, as well as to, I guess, expand on my previous statement, proposing new piping across the street basin C and separate that town drainage from basin C to allow the water to flow out to the pond and not pool in the street so much and well up. So that's kind of the quick overview of the drainage improvement. We're also proposing to remove some of the temporary stone drainage rails that were put in during construction and regrade that area, re-lome it, feed it with the appropriate erosion controls to do so. So that's kind of the quick overview.
All right, I appreciate that. And if you could, when you come back with regard to this construction schedule, if you can make that as specific as possible, you know, that would be very helpful to us. So like we did with the other project, where everything is just sort of spelled out in probably greater detail than we would typically do. I think that would give the board some assurance that, you know, things are going to be done. And, you know, a very realistic assessment of, you know, this is how long it's going to take, this is when we can see results, this is the metric by which we're going to evaluate whether or not, you know, this is successful and all of that. So whatever you can do in that regard, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, Brian. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Actually, two more things before I ask the board members. Are we also talking about adding more drains to the bottom of that street?
Yes. In our proposal, we are adding a catch basin at the corner of Candlelight Lane and Silver Lake Road that would then be tied into the stormwater basin basin C. So yes, we are.
Good. Jim, is it possible for our benefit? Because again, doing the Zoom meetings, I'm grateful we can do them, but it can be harder. Can we get hard copies of the proposal beforehand so that we can all have a chance to look it over?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I didn't provide the plan just yet, because I figured it would be good to have our peer review vetted. And then I get you a legit plan that we're going to, or that developer is proposing. But yeah, I'll get you a hard copy before the next meeting. As long as, I mean, if there's no grand changes, we could print those off. But Sean, if there is any changes, I guess, if you could just mail some hard copies to me. If it's, or if it's alone by 17, we could just print them off, because it's just, what, one sheet, right?
Well, I have a plan set of five sheets. So I've also provided some additional construction details, some construction control. So there is five sheets. But Jim, maybe you and I can talk tomorrow, and I'd be happy to print off whatever copies the board needs and send it to you.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. Yep.
That'd be very helpful, at least to me. Anyone else on the board got a comment or a question?
One comment that I would have, Pete, if I may, is that does it make sense to have a catch basin halfway up Candlelight to maybe capture some of the water before it makes it down to the bottom of the hill?
Well, there are catch basins on either side of Candlelight Road that are about 50 feet from Silver Lake Road. So there is some catchment. And those basins were actually outfitted with their double great basins and outfitted with cascade grades, high-capacity grades, which was done, I don't know, six months or so ago. And that was one of the kind of ongoing Band-Aids, if you would. So I think we do have good catchment coming down from Candlelight. This added catch basin is just going to catch that little bit more, as well as what's coming down Silver Lake and put it into the basin to provide more detention and treatment.
Yeah, and Sean, just, I know we have talked about it in the field, but Mr. Petterzo, I think, is speaking to the length of separation between those catch basins. You know, the one that's about 50 feet up, and then the next one, that's, I forget how much we counted off for that one. But you don't feel a need to add any additional in-between?
No, and I did some analysis per BSC's comment about bypass. And the catchment area to those catch basins is not significant. You're not reaching a flow that's exceeding the basin capacity. So I think we're in good shape there. Obviously, I think BSC is going to comment on that. That's something we talked about in the field with them, as well as one of their comments. So my feel is, I think we have the appropriate catchment on Candlelight, and we'll just be adding this one right at the end there.
We had one or two on each side of the road.
I only have it on one side of the road, on the, I guess, if you're looking up Candlelight on the right-hand side. And the reason being, you have the gutter line that's already crossing through there. I don't think a second one would really do much good.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions, comments?
I would echo Brian's request to have as much details as possible. When you had mentioned there's going to be improvements to the existing catch basins, what will that include? And also, is that only adding an additional catch basin? Will anything be changed in the existing one?
In the existing detention basin, yes. Right now, it is, I guess, designed as an infiltration basin. We've found that it doesn't have the proper separation to groundwater to be a legitimate infiltration basin. So we'll be modifying that basin to provide an outlet at the lowest level, so it's not keeping water in it. We'll be lowering the berm in between the sediment four bay and the basin itself, so there isn't excess retention of water in the four bay. And then increasing the outlet pipes from that outlet structure, so we're not artificially creating a high-water situation in the basin.
Got it, Sean. Thank you. So that will pretty much solve the issue of having excessive running water right on the right side when you're looking up the hill?
Yes. And then we'll have the basin right at that corner there. That's the reason for that new basin. Yes.
Thank you.
Jason, you got anything? You all good?
Oh, I'm good. Everyone covered everything I had. Thank you.
Okay. Before we vote on a meeting for next week, anyone in the public have any comments or questions?
Yeah, can I ask a few questions?
Go right ahead, Terry.
So I guess the couple of questions I have is, is there going to be any impact as far as for basin C, the amount of water that gushes out of it during heavy rainfall?
Um...
Or is even more water bypassing to basin C?
So we will be putting more water into basin C that would otherwise go to the town's inlet on Silver Lake Road.
So I don't know what CONCOM, what their review is, but I can tell you that I just have, you know, concerns, because I live right next to it. And it's massive amounts of water that flow gallons per hour into the lake that, to me, says, I don't know what sediment or whatever is getting rushed into the lake, what kind of erosion is going to happen to the lake. So right off the bat, that's my concern, is that the pipes are, it sounds like you're diverting the water even more back straight into the lake. My second question would be, or maybe comment maybe to the board, is maybe we ask Fafford to, this area has gotten redesigned so many times and hydro-seeded so many times. There are a number of trees that were initially a buffer between the basin and Silver Lake Road that have been taken down. A couple of months ago, a few were taken down without even notice to the town. And we called and let them know to say, hey, why are they taking these trees down? So I'd like to, you know, I think the board should get to know exactly, if any, trees, existing trees that are a buffer are getting taken down. Another comment would be to know the extent of disturbance that's going to occur. Because this seems like we're, next summer, or next spring, is going to be another Dust Bowl. And the third comment would be, I would ask the board to recommend sod. Because after all the amounts and dozen times of hydro-seeding, last time, it was sprayed halfway up the trees. It gushes into the road. It goes into the lake. It causes massive weeds in the lake. I kind of think enough's enough. We need to get them to pony up for sod, because I don't want to have another issue where there's shoddy hydro-seeding getting run up into the street and back into the lake. So those would be my comments.
Thank you, Brian. Jim, quick question. On the original permitting for this, was there any wording on the buffer between Silver Lake Road and all this?
So actually, the original permit had the basin right up on the road. This actually was shifted back some. But, I mean, given where it is today, and there was trees preserved, there certainly has been several taken down over time. I know some of them have to do with health. I know one a butter had a roof get hit with one of the trees. But nevertheless, if there is, you know, an opportunity to maybe replant just a handful along that buffer, even if it's just a few, just as a replacement, I think that would be, you know, a reasonable request.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
I think it's a very reasonable request.
Because it seems like since the improvements, it definitely has kind of gotten thinned down a bit.
Right, it's winter. There's no leaves in the trees.
Oh, well, that's true, too.
Anyone else in the public, any questions or comments?
I don't see any.
Nope. All right, so I suppose in front of us right now is, first of all, is would anyone, all of us be available? I take it on the 14th?
14th, and may I ask, if anyone's available a little bit early, I actually have a planning board meeting at 7:00. So if we're available at maybe 6:00 online, 5:30 or 6:00, whatever works best for you guys.
I could be. I know that.
That's fine with me.
I can be there.
Brian?
Yeah, that's fine. Just to echo what you said earlier, Peter. So the sooner that we can get information so we can digest it and understand what it is that we're going to be asked to make a decision on next Thursday, that would be very helpful. And also, I'm happy to have an earlier meeting to get the problem solved. But if it's not, I want to make sure that we don't meet for the sake of meeting. And, you know, Conservation has 16 questions that aren't going to be addressed. If next week is a realistic ask, and we're going to have the information soon enough from BSC and any other changes where we can actually digest it and understand it before we come to next Thursday, then that's fine. That's my only hesitation about having a hearing next week. I don't want to have to make a decision. Well, just sort of, not speculation, but without fully having an opportunity to understand it and making sure that everything is, you know, that Sean has enough time and Conservation has enough time and our peer review has enough time. So I would defer to Jim on that one.
Jim, would it move us to, you know, I really don't want to push them further back, because, you know, we want to get this project going. But would it be who of us to give them another week and do it on the 21st? Instead of making it wait the full month, it gives everyone an additional week after peer review and Conservation hears?
Yeah, I mean, it's completely up to you guys. But I will say, our peer review engineer is committed to getting it before that date and is prepared to come to the meeting that evening as well, if you guys were to meet.
I will leave it up to the board. After Brian's comments, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know...
Go ahead, Brian.
I'm sorry. So if Jim thinks it's a reasonable amount of time for them to get everything, and our peer review can get it to us by Tuesday, the latest, then sure. That's, I think, then let's do it. Let's move this. Let's fast-track whatever we can to get a resolution to that neighborhood.
Well, either peer review gets it to us. Conservation's meeting Wednesday night, so results of that we'd get during the day on Thursday. So it still would be a little rush, but I'm sorry to interrupt you. What were your thoughts?
No, I was just going to say what Brian said.
Okay. Ryan?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Two Bryans.
Brian?
Yeah, I'm with Brian. I was wondering if Friday would work at first, just so we can get at least a day between conservation comments. But alas, if it's going to have to be Thursday, I'm okay with that, as long as we can get it by noon, hopefully. You know, conservation comments, and really is pending what they find after their review. And...
Yeah, I feel a little bit rushed.
Yeah, I will add, though, that so Conservation, they certainly won't have finalized any decision on this, because they're going through a formal notice of intent process. It's a little bit different. What the zoning board has to do is look at it and say, we're achieving some drainage improvements. Do you feel that they've made significant enough progress in order for this board to recommend releasing the cease and desists, while also understanding that, you know, they're still in the notice of intent process with Conservation? So technically, we're not approving a plan. But you're looking at it and saying, you know, our peer review engineer has some confidence that this is the right direction. This is the correct next step. And, you know, even after, say, if you met Thursday and said, you know what, you are making progress, this does look like it's achieving what we've been asking for all along here, there may be some tweaks to that plan. And so with that, you know, you could certainly condition that those tweaks come to the board for further review. I mean, this is your permit in hand. But at the same time, I think we stated a while back that we're going to let Conservation's notice of intent process kind of guide that approval of the plan. So Thursday would be, this is looking like, you know, we have a legit solution here to our drainage. We'll recommend potentially the release of a cease and desist. However, we're going to hold you to very strict deadlines. And we expect for you to achieve approval with Conservation.
All right. I'll throw a motion on the table, make a motion to hold a special meeting at 6:00 PM on January 14th, 2021.
That's a good motion.
All favor?
Aye.
That passes. Hopefully, we can get some good information for next week, guys.
Thank you, Sean.
Absolutely.
We're looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Brian, I kindly hand it back off to you.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Peter.
You got it.
So I guess the next item on the agenda is a status update for 65 Hickson Street. Jim, you want to give some...
And the applicant is, or the permit holder is on the line. I see Nathan over there. And I will just report that I've checked with Board of Health and Animal Control, and we've received no concerns or comments from anybody. And I don't know if Nathan has an update on, I believe one of the stipulations was fencing. And yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Hi, Nathan. Thanks for showing up.
Thanks, yes. We've gotten, I got here on October 1st, and since then, I've installed a kennel. It is a 20 by 20-foot square. And I did this because it was just quicker. It was pre-made. I just ordered it and put it up. I also put cement on the floor, so that way it's easier to clean, and the dogs are clean. And I'm doing this provisionary, because I was thinking, oh, we got a three-month grace period here to try and do everything. So it was cheaper, quicker, portable. And I'm kind of, the quote that I got for the fencing of the perimeter of the yard is 5,000. So I was wanting to do this first before, you know, maybe getting a definite approval, and then I can invest in getting the perimeter fence.
Okay. Was, Jim, was the perimeter fence that was part of the conditions?
Yes. Hold on a second. I have it here. We don't necessarily require it to be the entire perimeter. It does need to be closed in, but not necessarily the entire perimeter, because I know it's a rather larger lot.
I can share pictures if you were...
Yeah, so just shall install a fence within the rear yard to contain the dogs.
Yes.
And then, so you currently, so you do have a, a kind of a temporary fence, then you're saying?
It is, it is a fence. It's, it's about, what would you say, eight feet? Eight feet tall? It's really huge.
Oh, okay. Wow.
And eight feet tall and 20 feet by 20 feet. And, and it's a square. If I can, I, I didn't think about it, but I got some pictures.
And then, Jim, also the, I, I guess, did we have any provisions from the last meeting then about having the animal control officer to review? Or is there any kind of updates with, I mean, it's great to hear that all the, it sounds like there have been no complaints.
Right.
I assume all the neighbors are happy, so that's great. That's always great to hear.
There's an annual review for all, all the, all these animal kennels. And so the Board of Health will do an annual review as well as animal control. So there hasn't been one yet. It's too short of a timeframe, but I did talk with them and they have no complaints or concerns. And so they'll continue to do those reviews. So, so probably here in the next six months or so, they'll, they'll do a review or at that location.
Alright. I can share if, if you want to. Let me share the screen real quick.
Do we have the means to do that, Jim?
Of course we do. Go for it, Nathan.
Jim's got this under control.
Alright, there you go. It's, here, this is the actual kennel. I didn't do the landscaping yet because I don't, it's kind of, kind of temporary. In the backyard, they have this kennel area, you know, but as we had discussed earlier, they're not supposed to stay out all day there. When I let them out, I let four out at a time. And when I walk them, I walk four at a time. So this is kind of like their waiting area and play area for a couple hours a day when it's warm. So.
Yeah, looks good.
Hasn't been useful very much yet, so it has the cement below for easy cleaning and the, the 20 by 20 square. That's, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
I've actually been in the neighborhood a few times and I have seen this. And, and I have to be honest with you, I was a little disappointed because I was anticipating the yard being fenced. But after hearing from the permit holder, I can, I can really appreciate what he's saying that, you know, I'm gonna spend this money to be fenced in this whole yard and I run a 50/50 risk. I, I, everything's been good, but the board could say no. So after hearing from him, I, I personally, I'm okay. Again, I've been by a few times. I've never seen a nuisance or, you know, dogs out there barking and howling or anything.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
Nate, thanks for coming back. I, I understand the hardship of paying 5,000 for, to cover the whole backyard. Especially now prices went up. It seems, seems like what you have set up here and the fact that you're taking four dogs at a time. I definitely respect that and I appreciate you following the guidance. It's probably six feet tall, the, the, this fence?
Maybe, yeah. I wasn't. I'm a little rusty.
To keep the dogs away. Are you gonna stick to this permanently, the setup going forward?
No. Depending on, you know, you and everybody, I wanted to install a larger fence, fenced-in area and something a little bit nicer for the neighborhood, you know? Like, we were looking at one that was black, all black, and it's, it's pretty much discreet in, in, in appearance. And it would cover not up into the street, but you know, a little, like the backyard. I was thinking just the backyard of the house and kind of like a pool fence. And it would be easier for the, for the dogs as well.
Glad to hear that. Have, have you had any comments from your neighbors by any chance? Such as the ones that were here when you were applying for a special permit?
The lady here behind us, she, she came over. She, she wanted to see and meet all the dogs and she was very happy to see them. Another neighbor down the street stopped me on the street and, and said she's been wanting to meet them and just things like that. Friendly people and haven't had any incidents or anything with dogs getting away. So you, they're on the leash at all times when they go outside, except when I take them to the fenced-in area and that's it.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Are there any other comments from the board? So then tonight, I guess, Jim, we left it as a, a three-month kind of review to come back, have a review meeting. Are we voting on any, what are we voting on specifically tonight?
No, 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 no need to vote. It was just more of a status update. And just, you know, if there was any real concern, you could certainly, you know, the, really the, the thought would be, you know, potentially revoking of any kind of permit, but since there was no real concerns and, and there will be annual updates. Our, our Board of Health agent and our Animal Control Officer will certainly provide any concerns to both Tim and I and, you know, and we would relay it to the board. But yeah, at this time, there's no, no vote necessary.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd just like to kind of echo the same thoughts that the other member, board members were saying, but just to commend you that it sounds like you're definitely falling through and being a good neighbor, which is really, you know, the, ultimately the key that we're looking for. And best of luck to you with the dogs in the spring and through the winter.
Brian, can, can I make one comment?
Yeah, sure.
So I echo everything that everyone else has said. You know, with regard to the fencing, I think what you have is, is adequate now. If you want something similar, I don't think there's any, and I don't know if anyone else shares my opinion, but you know, that satisfies my concern about, you know, the dogs and that, that there's a place for them to be corralled. So I don't think you necessarily have to fence in your whole lawn if that was one of your questions that you wanted to address tonight. But I, I think what you have is adequate and if you improve it and make it more aesthetically conducive to the neighborhood, I think that's even better. But I don't know if that was something you wanted to be addressed.
I agree with Brian. I feel like 20 feet by 20 feet, given the size of the dogs, in my opinion, they're comfortable, they're not, you know, there's enough space for them to roam around freely and they're only there temporarily, not all day.
Right. I, I have no issues with it. And again, I've, I've seen a couple of dogs out there and I think a fence would look nice, a little back fence, but if this works for them, I have no issues.
Yeah. No, I agree. So I guess it's really your choice then.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, any other comments then from any other board members?
Nope, all good.
Okay, um, yeah, best of luck.
Alright, thank you.
Take care, everyone. Bye.
Bye, Nick.
Okay, what's the, so general business 2020 annual report?
Yeah, some exciting stuff now. So we, so we got, the annual report was in your package. I can share it on the screen if, if you haven't jumped into that just yet. One second. There we go. So this is the annual report. It's, you know, it's pretty straightforward. We do this every year that, so if you guys haven't seen or anybody new who hasn't seen the annual report that goes out from the town, all the boards and committees are typically included in that. So, you know, I, I draft for both planning and zoning. This one's the zoning. It's pretty straightforward, kind of plug and play. This is kind of your charge. This is the, the group there. And then these are all the things Laura did a great job of just running down all, all the things you guys reviewed this year and, and the results of those. And then just kind of touching on a few things, this year being that, you know, we're at our 10% affordable housing. We've met that. That's kind of, that's a big deal. So that's, it certainly should be included in the town report. And so that's really the gist of it. The request tonight is if, if you have any questions, edits, comments, certainly take them in. If not, you know, I'll, I'll just be sending this off to the select board for inclusion into the, to the annual report.
Seems awful light. I think we worked a lot more on this.
I would simply say that you, good job on it, Jim. Looks good to me.
Thank you.
I'm Jim and Laura. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. And Laura.
It's good. Great job.
Alright. Sounds good. And then if, or you guys also have in your package, two minutes, two packs of minutes, November 5th and December 3rd? You had an opportunity to review those.
November 5th looks fine to me on, on the December meeting. The only thing I would say at the end with a firm and meeting, it had me as the chair, chairman, and I just changed that to member.
Yep.
Other than that, I move to accept the meeting, accept the minister meeting of November. I should take one at a time?
Either one.
February and December with the change.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I got for you tonight, guys.
Actually, I've got, I've got a question and I see Dennis is onto a much heated event on this. We just, the state just passed that new reform bill. And I know at one point it had municipal employees on there as well. Do we know if that went through with that wording in it that affects us as board members?
Are you talking about the qualified immunity?
Yes, you got it.
Dennis, I don't know if you've been following it. I, I believe we were taken out, but.
Yeah, we, we'll get some clarification on that, Peter, but my understanding was, was also that we were taken out of that. But we can get some more information on that. It was a major issue for all of us a few months ago.
Yeah, I thought we were taken out, but you just, you never know what they slipped in. Yeah, thank you.
We'll, we'll get some, we'll get some information back to you. KP Law hasn't given us anything that would raise concern, but we'll get some information clear.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yep.
Alright. Thanks, Dennis. So I guess just motion to close?
I'm making a motion to close.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.